Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the committee of whole meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klecker.
He's in the building somewhere.
He's in the building.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Eiler.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. Purpose of the meeting this morning is to receive information in regards to a previous report that was given to the commission pertaining to Fire District Number Two. Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Maury Thompson with the County Manager's Office. The purpose of the meeting this morning is to review once again the executive summary that I provided to this body on April 19th. A little bit of background before we get started as to what brought us here today. As a result of concerns brought to the attention of this body regarding governance, personnel, and financial issues of Johnson County Fire District Number Two, this body at your March 15th business session directed staff to conduct a review of said district in regards to the district's short and long-term financial viability, stability of operations, and strength of service, and explore options referenced in the Cooperative Services Feasibility Study, which I'm confident you all recall, which was conducted in July of 2017. My further understanding was that the intent of this body at that time was that, as you give staff direction, you emphasized your concern about the long-term financial viability of the district and your desire to address and mitigate any future disruptions to that district. So my intent today is to walk you once more through those threats that were identified as a result of that report, and then talk perhaps a little more specifically than we did last time about the options brought before you as a result of this summary. So threats to ongoing viability, I'd start with the transition to Kansas Police and Fire, commonly known as KPF. Effective January 1, 2018, the district transitioned from CAPers to retirement to KP and F. That change was identified to cost the district an additional $330,735 in 2018. Would note that that has not been identified as an immediate threat, but of course it does create an increase in expenses while we consider the additional threats that I'll identify here in a moment. I would also make somewhat of a statement of opinion here, noting this in the report is no judgment on the decision to make that transition. My understanding is that there were valid considerations going into making that decision to transition to that retirement system. Only pointing it out here is it does add additional cost to the district. Moving on then, next identified threat, and I would suggest the largest one to the ongoing viability of the district, is what we'll refer to as the Overland Park contract. Overland Park officials have advised the district chief that the contract between the city of Overland Park and the district will be discontinued. During 2022, the district will discontinue services, and Overland Park will make the minimum payment under the contract of $220,000. The contractual relationship then will be totally discontinued at the end of 2022 with the exception of what we have previously referred to as the island annexation area that accounts for an inconsequential amount of revenue. And I will pause there. Hopefully you have the financial spreadsheet in front of you to refer to as I make these comments this morning. The discontinuation of contract services will result, when fully implemented, in 22 of an estimated loss of revenue of over $770,000 annually. One new piece of information that I want to draw to your attention this morning that I didn't comment on previously is give you a little bit of frame of reference here. For 2017, the value of a mill in this fire district is $195,584. Current levy of the district is 18.277 mills. Another related question I've been asked, is there a limit on the district's ability to raise that mill levy, i.e. a cap? And no, there is not. So as a result, Fire District Number Two, taking into account that significant loss of revenue in 2022, Fire District is unlikely to remain financially viable beyond 2021 when the contract steps down significantly without raising the Fire District mill levy or affecting service levels. One additional point of reference here, so you look at the value of that contract, you obviously can do the math based on that one mill, but that's about three and a half mills would be the equivalent of that contract. In 2018 terms, 2001 goes to about four. And I'm doing some rounding there, so. So assuming some optimistic annual increases in ad valorem revenues, and we use five to six percent as an assumption, and a reasonable growth in expenses, used three and a quarter percent annually, Fire District Two would experience a deficit of nearly $400,000 in 2022 and over half a million dollars in '23 due to the lost contract. I would draw your attention towards the bottom of that page. In the course of verification, the city of Overland Park plans as to the contract, again verifying the comments that I started with here in regards to the contract. The city did provide a statement, and that is included verbatim there in your report as to their assumptions and plans. Moving from there to the city of Spring Hill and Miami County contracts, note that the Spring Hill contract currently accounts for 18% of the district's revenues, and the services and revenues related to the Miami contract are dependent upon that Spring Hill station, so hard to separate those. So additionally, the discontinuation of the Spring Hill and Miami contracts, if that were to occur, would also result in the loss of most of the ambulance revenue, and that service would seem likely to be discontinued as a result. The loss of the Spring Hill station would also result in the need to increase staffing levels at the remaining stations to continue to serve the area outside the city of Spring Hill, but currently in the service area of the Spring Hill station. So the likely outcome of the loss of the Spring Hill contract is a reduction of 28% of the Fire District's revenue, but a corresponding decrease in expenses of only about 18% to 20%, so you've got a net revenue loss of somewhere in 8% to 10% range. That's what we're anticipating. So again, a little bit of reference here, Spring Hill mill levy equivalent is about 3.3 mills, and the Miami County mill equivalent is about one, slightly under, I believe. So again, hopefully those mill levy equivalents will give you some frame of reference to those levels. With that, I'm going to stop there as far as the financial issues and move on into options unless there are questions.
Questions so far. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson, thank you for your report. I was trying to study the numbers as you were speaking, and you may have said this, but I missed, I may have missed it, so forgive me if I'm repeating what you said. You talked about the potential impact on several of these contracts. Is there going to, or would there also naturally be a corresponding decrease in costs? I know it's a difficult conversation, but if Overland Park assumes a wide service area, which I think by most definitions they would, those costs would be shifted to their operation. Would there be a corresponding decrease? And I don't want to interject layoffs or transfers to that department. Is that incorporated in this?
No, those conversations haven't occurred, so there are no assumptions made about how that might translate.
So these cost calculations don't foresee any corresponding reduction in expenses?
Not in relation to the Overland Park contract.
I don't think there would be.
No.
Well, to the district, there would be though, wouldn't there? Because if you have personnel covering, you no longer need personnel covering that area because Overland Park will be covering it.
Not necessarily. My understanding, and someone can clarify this, but you know, as a result of the annexation, the Overland Park contract was a payment to the Fire District.
Correct.
So I don't think there's any change in service levels. That's my recollection, but that could be wrong.
So the district would still have to provide the service, just does not receive the payment? Is that what you're saying?
They would. The payment was, as I recall, was in relation to the detachment of some of the land area of District Number Two. Mr. Jarrett, perhaps you can clarify?
That was how it was calculated, but there is a contract for services. The district does provide services. Whether they would scale down, that's an open question because you still have to man so many positions to provide service to the remaining area.
And that goes to the core of the issue, because if Overland Park begins to fill in there, then arguably there would be a perspective of scaling down for the district, but the timing of that is not included in this report, and the implications of it really are not. We're just assuming that the expenses stays on the current projections. Okay.
So options was the final component of the executive summary, and options in your report, A through E, yes, A through E, are pulled directly from the Cooperative Services Feasibility Study strategy, so I'll move through those relatively quickly. Strategy A was status quo, you do nothing, pretty straightforward. B, cooperative services, so while collaborating to offset some training and administrative costs, we believe is appropriate, cooperative efforts are unlikely to result in enough cost savings to offset the anticipated losses that we're talking about here. Strategy C was consolidation. Kansas statutes do allow for consolidation of fire districts with the approval of each fire board and authorization of this body. Consolidation requires findings that all impacted districts will benefit from the action and that fire insurance rates may be positively impacted. Strategy D was a merger as a county department, so this action would require the dissolution of the district and would, may or likely, require legislation to accomplish. Strategy E was a countywide fire department. I would suggest that that's an ambitious goal, and it's likely impractical in the near future. So those were the results, or excuse me, the options laid out in the Cooperative Services study. As you know, you've seen in the executive summary, staff has suggested a strategy F in your report, and that's this body assuming governance. Term that a transitional approach, should it become necessary to protect the sustainability of operations and/or continuation of existing contracts, this body may opt to dissolve the existing fire board and assume direct governance of the Fire District. Now, staff provides this report with a recommendation back on April 19th, when I presented it, that you all review these options detailed in this report and provide for public information and input as you work to deliberate and make a decision. So of course, this opportunity today is, I would suggest, one of the first steps in that process. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, the Spring Hill contract, is my understanding that's renewable on an annual basis?
That's correct. On a calendar year basis.
Pardon?
On a calendar year basis.
Counter-year basis.
In your wind to December 31.
So that depends upon, really upon Spring Hill's desires?
Correct. I suggest like any contract, two willing partners, yes.
Okay. And you mentioned this, but I need to understand it a little better. If that contract were not to exist for the district, the revenue loss would be what amount?
Somewhere in the range of 8% to 10%.
600-plus thousand? Or 600,000, something like that?
Yes, yeah.
And you mentioned, you mentioned the loss of the station that's currently at Spring Hill. How does, how would that work?
Well, my understanding, there's others who could speak much more eloquently to that point, but that Miami County contract is dependent upon that station, so if you don't have that station, you likely aren't able to provide coverage to the Miami County contract.
But the ownership of the station, if the Spring Hill contract were not effective, who would, who would own that station? Would the Fire District still have it, or would it be Spring Hill, or?
And I would have to defer to-
How would it, how would it function, I guess?
Defer to the district on that question.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as Johnson County migrates more away from being a rural county to a suburban county, sorry, Mr. Brown, there are challenges in that transformation. I'm just wondering if, none of this is new. I mean, we've known about the Overland Park contract, so is there a strategic plan in place to help with this transition? What is the district thinking? How are they seeing this work out? You know, I commend their efforts with Miami County and so forth, but how are they hoping this plays out?
Well, I, as you indicated, this is not new news. Parties were aware of the agreement with the city of Overland Park and the expiration of that contract. As to the district's plans, the board's plans, and a strategic plan, I'm not in a position to address their preparations for that inevitability.
Thank you.
You know, I would say this, the result of our deliberation today, if a majority of the commission agrees, will be focused on one of the options to pursue or to do nothing, and so keep that in mind as the discussions go on. Normally, at a committee of the whole, we do not ask for input other than from staff. However, we did send out specific notifications and invitations of those directly involved. That includes the Fire District Board members, the Fire Chief, Spring Hill, who has one of the contracts, Miami County, and Overland Park. So if any representatives from those agencies or departments would like to address the commission on any of these items, I would welcome you to the podium, state your name and address your position, and we'll be glad to receive that information. And there may be questions from the board in that regard.
Thank you, and good morning. My name's Daryl Dugan, and I'm the chairman of the Fire District Number Two Board. I was invited to the March meeting unaware as to what prompted that meeting, who asked for that meeting, and what caused this. I've been a board member for five years, maybe six, I'm not sure, and I've become very proud of the services, the health and safety services that we offer to the areas that we either tax directly or offer contracts to. Fire District Number Two's financial situation, I want to report, is not in jeopardy. I wasn't aware that that was the meeting that we were going to discuss. At the time I attended that meeting, I was not a board, I was a board member, not chair, and I was taken a little back by the meeting. Since the report came out, I'm even taken back more. Over the last five, six years of my involvement, I was aware of the Overland Park contract. At the outset of my position on that board, I was also aware of a deficiency, a revenue deficiency in the contract that we currently have with the city of Spring Hill. To answer your question in regards to funding, as I understand it, our fire station in Spring Hill lies within our Fire District boundaries, so loss of the Spring Hill contract would not directly lose that station. It would require us through mutual aid to perform services to that area with no revenue costs, or no revenue increase. We have worked since my involvement here to try to bridge the gap between what we felt the contract area with the city of Spring Hill, and that's what I'm addressing right now. We feel they should be paying, and what they are paying. We've successfully bridged that gap, or at least closed that gap, to the point now that it's only about $146,000 short of being equal. We also set out a few years back because of representation we had at the state level to help institute programs to allow the city of Spring Hill to bring that contract area into our Fire District, transfer that expense from their expenses to be levied by our fire mill levy, which would immediately close that gap. That is allowed by a simple vote of the city council. They've been reluctant to do that for various and sundry reasons. The only one reason that stuck out was the fact that we weren't, we weren't even involved with Kansas Police and Fire for our firemen. We were still under another program. We've since closed that loophole. That represents $146,000 of the $400,000 projected that would be deficient in 2022. Over the years, the Fire District Number Two's budget has come before this board annually, and more times than not, has been separated from the other fire districts for your approval because the financial viability of that district has been the strongest. That Fire District has offered health and safety issues to the communities that it represents for a number of years, and has only gotten better. It's equal to or greater than most of the municipalities that surround us. So this is what alarmed me with these comments, that we're going to be financially not viable by 2022, because the management through the board and our staff has been able to address these situations for the entire timeframe of the existence of this Fire District and overcome those, any objectives that we had. That $146,000 plus the average transfer from our general fund or operating fund to equipment reserves, and John, you'll have to help me out with this, our equipment reserve fund sits somewhere at around three-quarters of a million dollars?
Was it the end of 2017, we're about $700,000?
There you go. Okay. We've transferred anywhere, as I've said, between 80 and $125,000 a year to equipment reserves, so we don't have to end up with a big bond issue to replace our equipment. If in that particular year, we're unable to transfer that 100 or 125,000, and we were able to get the contract with Spring Hill, or at least get them to either match what we think they should be paying, or apply our mill levy to that contract area, would put us at a position of about additional $275,000, $80,000, only about $120,000 short of what you projected as a deficit. I would hope that based on the experience that we've demonstrated over the years to financially operate and manage that district, that this board would feel that we have that ability and have it in hand. We've been talking about this. We're not going to stop talking about this. In listening to the numbers, and we use minimal projections, and I assume those projections were based on common, on current assessed evaluations, and didn't make an allowance for any increased construction or development in the area, is that a fair assumption?
I think, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Nor did it calculate any increase in expenses from salaries, those kind of things.
But as we all know, we have control of expenses. We can project those, we can set those without diminishing the services that we provide to the area. And that's all a form of budgeting. As I see it, and I think I speak for the majority of the board, that $150,000, based on your numbers, projected deficit, assuming we can get the Spring Hill contract where it is, or where it should be, is a manageable number. And based on the experience and the demonstration that this Fire District has demonstrated to this board and to its residents of its ability to manage its financial stability, I would hope that you would let us continue to work with that district in the current status. I had the conversation with Maury after I saw this report, and I said, wow. To answer your question, if the city of Overland Park stopped paying that contract area, we would reduce, we would, we would need to reduce because we're not obligated to cover those areas that they have, that would fall within their, their city. Now, I would hope we could reach some contractual obligation because we would be closer to a good part of that area to service than they would be. Any projections I've seen by the city of Overland Park to place a fire station are in the 179th Street corridor. All of our stations are south of there. So are we obligated to just take care of that area because of mutual aid, or can we reach some contractual agreement with Overland Park to continue to offer that? But this is all a form of management. Management, we've demonstrated for years, we have the ability to handle. So I for one don't understand what caused this. I don't know who requested it. I wasn't the chairman of the board at the time it was requested, but I rest, hope you rest assured that the majority of this board feels like this is a manageable situation. Our biggest hurdle, and we've tried to accomplish this with the Kansas Legislature, is to get the city of Spring Hill to put that particular area, that contract area, into our Fire District. The lion's share of the city, the city of Spring Hill area is already in our Fire District. Now, what are their options? If they choose to discontinue a contractual agreement with us, they could move to detach the rest of their city from our services, that service area. We would not like to see that happen, and that's not addressed here in any of this. We would like to continue to work with Spring Hill to try to get this, get this, this $146,000 gap covered. Our accountant has provided this information that I could share with you. If the city of Spring Hill were to move that particular area into our Fire District, on a $100,000 assessed evaluation home in that area, it would mean a $36 a year increase to them, or what they're currently paying. Of course, doing the math, 200,000 is, $100,000 home in Johnson County is, I don't know if it exists anymore, but it'd be about $70 a year, $6 a month to continue the level of health and safety protection that our Fire District provides to that area. And I haven't seen a study from Spring Hill recently, but all of the ones that they've done over the past few years, polling their residents to discuss how happy they are with the services that are provided, our fire protection and ambulance protection ranks highest on the list. I'm reasonably sure that the patrons in that area are unaware of these, of this contractual shortcoming that we have right now. But I, I ask that you allow the Fire District, its current board, to work on this situation because we certainly feel as a board, we have it, we have the ability to overcome this deficit through our negotiations.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, let me, you know, one of, one of the issues that's been brought to my attention is in regards to the Spring Hill contract. And in conversations with officials, it does raise my level of concern as to whether there can be a successful resolution to that issue, and for whatever reason. But I think from a, from a longer-term financial standpoint, I think that's maybe the biggest problematic issue that the district would face.
I would agree, but we have, we have to weigh, had to weigh all the options. The question was raised is who's going to provide the services for that area if we don't? A, they contract- A, they contract with someone else to come down and provide it, City of Olathe, or someone like that. We have about a two and a half to three million dollar building there. We have about roughly a million and a half to two million dollars worth of hardware there. Plus, we have manpower expense there. That's five to seven million dollar investment. It makes, I only have a high school education and high school math, but $146,000 versus five to seven million dollar investment, it makes no sense at all. I hope we can convey that. I hope we convey that, that we're providing very proficient, I'll use that term, fire and ambulance service to that area. Proficient enough that south of there, Miami County wanted to contract with us to provide those services. How do you offset that? The patrons of the fire district stepped up and paid a, paid off a bond issue to build that station, which was the nicest station that the fire district had, that primarily serviced the City of Spring Hill. The patrons of the rest of the fire district stepped up with a bond issue to pay for equipment. We have a quint there, a ladder truck. Trust me, we don't need that ladder truck in the rest of the district we serve. Very expensive piece of equipment. And the entire district got to pay for that. And if Spring Hill transferred that contract area into our fire district, as I understand it, they wouldn't even be obligated to our current bond payments, correct? The rest of the district would pay for that. So from an economic standpoint, I, I don't know how much more information we can give.
Let me ask you this in regards to the contract with Miami County. What, what, what area of the county does that cover and does it, does it include full service?
It covers, is it two miles in?
Eighty square.
Eighty square, 72 square miles. They, are they provided the same services? Yes, we, yes, they do. It's kind of hard for us to, to write a contract and say, well, for this amount of money, you're only going to get this, this, and this. We can't instruct our firefighters, well, when you go there, you can't do this, this, and this.
And what?
What's, what's the trade off? The trade off is, is that I don't suppose call volume in that area demonstrates that they're using the service, all the services that we have to offer. Is that correct, Chief? So we understand that we've taken on some obligation, but we also understand they're probably not going to use most of the services that we offer. So.
And what is the value of that contract?
John, do you know that?
2018, the Spring Hill contract for the Miami County contract, $26,000 to $192,000.
And let me ask you this, would that contract be dependent upon the Spring Hill contract? Or is there ability to separate?
Well, that's, it's just conjecture, but I'm assuming that the domino effect is that if the Spring Hill contract is gone, and Spring Hill moves to detach the area that's within their city limits, then we'd lose our fire station. So we wouldn't have equipment and services there to readily service that part of Miami County. No.
Good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Dugan, in the equipment fund, you mentioned the potential possibly transferring some money out of there if needed in the future. Is in the current situation in the next couple of years, is there a planned purchase of a, a piece of fire equipment?
We have a CIP program, but do we have any major purchases between now and then?
$80,000 in 18, $261,000 in 19, and $886,000.
That was my concern.
And that, I didn't reference a transfer out of it. I referenced a transfer to it. Now, I don't, I'm not talking about taking any equipment reserve money, money to offset this, but we have the ability to reduce that amount of monies being transferred to that reserve fund in that period, that, that 12-month period.
I understand that, but I guess my concern would be is that fire districts, fire departments, with the major expenses is on an ongoing basis, and it appears you've done it correctly, is to have proper dollars in those funds to purchase equipment. And I assume that $800,000 purchase is an aerial truck to potentially replace the one you have?
It's actually three separate purchases in that year. I think one of them is a tinder truck, one of them is an ambulance, and the other, I believe, is the radio equipment because 2020 is the year the kind of radio system has to be replaced or will no longer function because of the encryption standard change.
And I, just from, from my standpoint, being elected official for nearly 30 years, I've been a strong believer that you systematically put money in an account to have the ability to replace equipment when it's needed and to maybe not properly fund that on an ongoing basis would be a concern of mine. I actually have another question is, you're the current board chairman. Mr. Dugan, has the, the fire district adopted the county's code of ethics?
No.
Is there a reason why?
I can tell you my reason, I only speak for me. And this, our minutes will reflect my comment on that. I, I was raised that I don't need a rule or law to tell me to do what's right. I know the difference between right and wrong. And I watch laws written all the time. And we have a building full of police officers over here to protect us against those people that don't adhere to those laws. And I don't, I'm not, I didn't feel, I will say this, when the motion was made, I seconded it, but it didn't pass.
Mr. Thompson, are you aware of any other board or commission that we have that has not adopted the code of ethics for the county?
I don't know that I can directly answer your question, Commissioner, but, and Chief of Council can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the county's position is all board members, appointed boards are, are bound by the code of ethics, the county's code of ethics.
Our board is, but the motion was made to adopt it for our employees, and that's what didn't pass.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
So, Mr. Dugan, then, did the board has adopted the code of ethics?
As I understand it, for the board, we have.
Voted on it and approved? Just checking.
We didn't.
No. Rod Richardson, board member, the county code of ethics, by its own language, automatically applies to us.
Applies to it.
The motion, as Mr. Dugan correctly stated, was that this applies to all county police, it ought to apply to our, so that was the motion to extend it to our employees.
And again, I, you know, it's a good question, why, I, I don't understand why it would not be extended. Is that, I guess I'm asking, or maybe you've already stated it. Mr. Brown?
So are the employees not bound by the code of ethics? Because it's not been voted upon and ratified by the board to bind them to it?
I'm assuming that's correct, yes.
I have a bit of a concern with that.
Mr. Ash, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the moment, I'd like to set the code of ethics issue aside and go back to the financial issue if I could, unless you want to continue the discussion. Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Mr. Dugan, thank you for coming forward and offering some explanation. I'm a little bit confused. There was reference to the Spring Hill city contract, and I thought the figure I heard was 100 and something thousand? Is that?
No, the contract with the City of Spring Hill is $640,000.
Okay, 640.
Year 2018. That number is $146,000, I believe, short of what our mill levy applied to that area would have generated.
Okay, that, that's, that's the disconnect I had. And I appreciate your elaboration on the Spring Hill contract, but I want to make sure I understood the implication of the Overland Park contract. As I understand it, it will be coming to an end unless there's some way to renegotiate with the City of Overland Park by the 2022. Is my understanding that you believe that even with the removal of that contract, you will have sufficient resources in order to go forward unencumbered as a district?
By 2022, correct. I believe we'll have a budget that will reflect that we have the ability to continue to operate.
Okay. And, and I think you made some suggestions that you will make adjustments in expenses. Is that my understanding of what you said, correct?
Right, we'll, we'll have to calculate the reduction in expenses of the loss of that coverage area. Certainly, it will reduce some of our expenses not having to cover that area. It's going to be kind of difficult, in my mind, for that area to not, part of that area not to be continued to contract with us for services because of the proximity of our station in, in regards to the proximity of any new Overland Park stations. Now, I don't know what Overland Park's 20-year plan is. The only, the only plan I've seen demonstrates a fire station somewhere on 179th Street or 175th Street. But that's because of the section between 69 Highway and Antioch Road, south of 191st Street, that particular area is going to stay, we're going to be the closest responding fire department in that area for, for a long time.
Okay. And, and I can respect that mutual aid arrangement, but are you anticipating then having an extension contract with Overland Park to help cover those costs or?
I would, I would be in hopes that we'd have the ability to sit down with the City of Overland Park and work out an extended contractual arrangements with them to continue to offer the services that we're currently offering to that area at the level that we're offering them. If that doesn't occur, and of course, we don't have no idea what that, that dollar amount will be, but if that doesn't occur, then what I'm stating is that I certainly think that we have the ability to budget between now and then to overcome this projected $400,000 deficiency. Between 2008 and 2013, the economic growth, not only in our area, but in the entire county, was reduced based on the, the climate, the financial climate in America. But I didn't have the opportunity to contact planning and zoning as to what the growth has been in our area in the last 24 to 36 months, but we're seeing some, some growth there now. And I'll go back to the, my previous point, that the numbers projected demonstrate a 3% to 5% growth. I think that's safe to assume that's an assessed evaluation, and I also think it's safe to assume that that 3% to 5% number, whatever that number is, is based on current structures on the ground.
Yeah, and it was actually, the, the assumptions on growth were 5% to 6%, expenses 3.25%.
Okay. But that 5% to 6% growth in assessed evaluation does not factor in new structures on the ground, is that correct?
Tom was just advising me, that's the total revenue growth, so.
So 5% to 6% including new construction?
Whatever happened in the last five weeks.
Wow, we've seen larger than 5% to 6% growth in assessed evaluation since the recession stopped without any growth from the county. In fact, this year, we saw, we're projected to see somewhere between 7% and 11%.
Mr. Dugan, I, I appreciate your questions. I think they are valid. Looking at the spreadsheet that Mr. Thompson has provided us, I assume it's Mr. Thompson, in 2021, the OP contract, the Overland Park contract, is just a few dollars shy of $775,000, and then by 2023, two years later, it drops down to just be $2,600. So that, that's the gap I look at.
Right.
That, that looks significant, and the impact on the operations and how you maintain that fill, fill that gap is something that I think concerns me. And then the other questions about Spring Hill or Miami County and others just kind of add a little bit of additional concern, but the, the Overland Park contract, unless you can renegotiate, and I, I wish you well, or however that works, but that's, that's imminent, I believe. The Spring Hill contract is possible, but the OP is, it's going to happen.
Well, I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Mr. Brown, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman, I do. Mr. Dugan, I've got a question related to the contracts for service areas with Spring Hill, with Miami County, and with Overland Park. Who from your board is negotiating or talking with the cities or Miami County about the future of those contracts, and where are those conversations at, at this point? You're, I'm looking for the board's surety level that those contracts will be renewed. I've heard that, I've, I've heard but if, and, and if we can, and but, but where are we in terms of having those conversations with those bodies, as critical as they are to this budget as I look at it? Where are those negotiations at today?
We recently entered into a new contract with Miami County, and I think Chief Francis is working on a extended timeline contract with them.
For EMS.
For EMS coverages. Those are annual contracts, so they only get negotiated on an annual basis. We have made attempts in the past to, to negotiate a long-term contract with the City of Spring Hill in our efforts to bring that funding up. We currently have a 12-month contract with them that will be renegotiated. It's usually done in August, I believe, August and September for the upcoming year, so we're going to, we'll enter into that agreement. Chief Francis generally represents us to Miami County. In the past, Rod Richardson was the chairman, and he's represented us to the City of Spring Hill along with our legal counsel. So I'm assuming those roles will be transferred to me at this point to, to work on that negotiation. Last year, we had a separate committee to work on a negotiation, long-term, negotiate a contract with the City of Spring Hill. We had a committee to do that. I'm not sure we'll do that again. We'll do that with the, in the similar format we've done in the past. Negotiating contracts on annual basis is just something that you, you guys deal with that on an ongoing basis. So do I have the ability to make, wave a magic wand and say, yeah, we're going to put this, this? No, I don't, I can't. We're just going to have to go back to the table and work on it.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Dugan, thank you for your willingness to share that information with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any of the other immediate stakeholders who would like to make any comments to the commission at this time?
Thank you, Chairman Hyler. My name is Rod Richardson. I'm a board member of the fire district, which is the subject of these discussions. I have been privileged to serve on the fire district board for 26 years, and I think 26 of those have been as chairman. So my, my level of caring and concern for this district hopefully is reflected by how long I've been willing to volunteer to take that position. And certainly now that there are some transitions going on, I continue to serve as a board member and happy to do. member and happy to do so. I don't really have a great deal to add to what Mr. Dugan said, although I think it's important to note that our board has not taken a position nor even discussed exactly what its response would be as a board to this, but we don't have a board meeting until next week, so this came up before that opportunity. So let me just very briefly talk about the current status, because I think it's important that this board understand that the, the two things that really haven't been discussed, but that need to be at the core of your thinking about what you may do, is not only our patrons of the district, of which I am one, which causes me to be extremely interested in what happens if my heart decides to go sideways or my house is on fire. These professional firefighters, our officers and our chief, are the ones that are responsible for making sure that if that happens, they arrive at the quickest possible time with the best-trained people, with the best equipment. So where are we today, as of right now? Our most important asset is our highly-trained and competent corps of officers, our chief, our firefighters, our EMTs, and our paramedics. We have expended probably the largest portion of our budget over the last 26 years, making sure that we had, as Mr. Dugan correctly pointed out, a first-class fire district that is capable of getting to my house to save my keister or my house if it's on fire, depending on what that problem has been, and they have been to my house. I have zero concerns about their ability to do that today. Concerns I have are about what happens in the future. Our operational equipment that we have right now is first-class. Our ISO ratings are excellent, as Mr. Dugan pointed out, on a par with any other district that we have. And our district for the past 26 years has established and maintained an exemplary record of competency, leadership, and integrity recognized by this Board of County Commissioners and your successors that have sit there and other departments. And as one who has sat before you every time we've had a budget approved, I think I can say with some degree of pride that past boards and up through now have provided you with first-class operations. So as of today, things are looking pretty good. I don't have a concern about who's going to show up at my house, how good the equipment is, or how well people are trained, and nobody in our district or our contract partners should have a concern either. The concern are the threats to the future. Obviously, your technical staff has presented all of you with a picture of what that, that threat could be. The problem is that none of us have a completely accurate crystal ball, but there are some things that I think, and I'm speaking just for me, as a, as a patron of the district and someone that has had the privilege of serving on this board for a while. There has been a, after 26 years of relative calm, shall we say, there's been a rather sudden and significant change in things that the Board of Directors have expressed concerns about and how they think the district should be managed. I am concerned that this is resulting in an erosion of confidence and board leadership going to the future, particularly by our, our employees and probably by some of our contract partners. I, I am concerned that there is or will be an erosion of our land's longstanding relationship with the City of Spring Hill. When I first got on the board in 1991, I think there wasn't a very good relationship between the district as it existed then and the City of Spring Hill. We worked hard to fix that over the years. If the City of Spring Hill left us, and if they took their rest of their property with us by detachment, that would be, in my opinion, a, a mortal blow to the ability of the district to go forward. That isn't to say that it couldn't survive in some form, but the ability of it to provide services to the remainder of the district that it would have to serve, in my mind, would be questionable at best in terms of its ability to maintain its current level of excellence. We lose City of Spring Hill, we're in trouble, in my opinion. So the, the potential of this significant financial disruption to the district is one of appropriate concern to the county and the district, and, and that's not to say our board hasn't been concerned about it, but unfortunately, we don't hold all of the levers to these issues. So the potential significant financial disruption to the district in the coming years, we face the threat, as you've already discussed, of the, of the loss of the City of Spring Hill, and basically the running out of the, of the post-annexation agreement we have with the City of Overland Park. So the overall loss of district assets and capability in the future, in the event of the, these issues aren't properly managed and successfully managed, is precisely what my concern is. That isn't to say that our board couldn't figure out a way around it. That isn't to say that the Board of County Commissioners couldn't make a decision that would help us, but what are the solutions? Well, you've outlined some in your documents that have been discussed, and I think all of those are fairly on the table. I will tell you, again, as someone that's been around for a while, that I look at it this way, as, as a patron of the district. The Board of County Commissioners has an overriding responsibility to our district, its employees, its patrons, and its contract partners. So in my view, a careful review of where we are and where we're going is not unreasonable, given events of the past year. I, I don't ever believe that any public body should ever resist a thorough, complete review of where they are. I think it's called accountability, and you, as the governing body of this Fire District ultimately, I think not only have a responsibility, but an overriding duty, if you're concerned about something, to check it out. If after you check it out, you determine that all is well, or you have continuing confidence, then great. But everything should be open and above-board and on the table. So, you know, Board of County Commissioner's action toward the district that will change its fundamental structure and history, however, should only be taken if the facts to support it are compelling, i.e., you know, my attitude is, I think you need to look, but at first, if you're going to make a decision, make sure that it's not going to harm. And by harm, I mean the, the employees of our district, the patrons of our district. I don't want you to do something that's going to make the ambulance two minutes later get into my house, in other words. So that's the scale that these things need to be weighed on. If it's going to maintain us or improve us, it's probably going to be a good decision. So if you proceed the way you're suggesting, the BOCC review should be thoughtful, detailed, with appropriate comments and input, not only from all stakeholders, before any action is taken, and that includes the current Board of Directors. And I think if public hearings happen to be taken in this, I think that's fine. I think I, I would be interested, as a board member, in hearing from anyone that has an interest in where we're going. So I want to, I want to really close my comments by, by saying that when we have these discussions, sometimes when you get into the weeds and you're talking about all of the technical issues that your technical professional staff have provided, the projections, et cetera, you forget about one of the single most important things we're, we're trying to protect, and that's our employees. Right now, we have a superb staff of professional firefighters, EMTs, paramedics. We have a great corps of officers, and we have, I think, a chief that, in my opinion, has proven himself over the long term, both to the Board of County Commissioners, and I believe to, to our Fire District, to be a very capable, qualified, professional manager that has brought us to this point. I think you should, if you have the opportunity, want to, certainly entertain his comments. But I think it's important to remember that when we start making decisions, these people have families, they have kids, they have colleges to pay for, they have car payments to make. These people have to have confidence, not only in the board, our board, and I think disruptions or unpleasantness that occurs at the board level, or things that suddenly change after a long, long time, as they did over the past year, can create a lot of concern amongst our troops. We aren't the, able to pay the salaries that Overland Park or Lathen can pay, so it's, we have to recruit people that have a passion for this and want to do the best they can, and we have a lot of people with very long-term relationships with our district. I do not want to see any damage done to the security of those folks. I want them to feel confident. So when you, whatever it is you decide to do, don't forget that it's our, our employees that ultimately are going to pay the price, along with our patrons. And I will make this last point. The, the reason that the district has achieved the success that it has, that I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, is not because of anything the board has done, and frankly, not because of, of anything the Board of County Commissioners has done over the last 26, 30 years. It's because we have had qualified professional staff that cared about not only the employees, but also obviously the patrons and our contract partners. That's the key to this. So the ultimate success of resolving the problems you're concerned about is going to have to include some concern about maintaining the integrity of that professional staff. So I think you should proceed. I think we should be open and willing to participate in your review process, and I think we should be willing to accept whatever the results of that is. So that's my personal position.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and I just want to reassure you, I clearly understand your passion for the employees, and I think I can speak for our board. I know myself, I know the most valuable asset, and I've said it many times in the county, is the employees that work for the county, and I think this board would want to reassure that whatever direction or whatever happens here, we would continue to back, and we clearly understand it's the, the employees that make the difference.
That's, that's exactly right, and thank you very much for saying that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Richardson? Is there any other member of that stakeholder group who would like to address the Commission at this time? Okay, there's no one else to be heard. The item is back before the Commission for further consideration. The, I would, I would suggest this. If there's action that this board would desire to take, that the recommendation from the Committee, the whole, would be for a public hearing, and that, that would be an agenda item for next week to determine date for that public hearing. I would hope also, if that's the decision, that we could have a little more specific information in regards to the Overland Park contract, what might happen beyond the end of that contract, and if there's any information that Spring Hill could share with us, we'd certainly be glad to have that. Mr. Klicka?
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I, I know that this district obviously is in, or this Fire District is part of my district, and it has been an issue of concern here over the last year, but I would probably encourage some type of public hearing for this reason. Number one, I think, as you know, some of us on the Commission have questioned where these Fire Districts should go, short-term and long-term, and hence, we did have a, a study with some, with observations and, and considerations for this board to look at as we go down the line. Number two is that the challenges that we are wrestling with here financially, or however else here with District Two, is not unlike one or two of the other districts here. So this is not necessarily an isolated topic, even though we're addressing it today. And number three is that our, the rural communities are changing here, and, and there's a larger, and I hate to use this word because probably Overland Park and Spring Hill and some of the others will kill me for saying this, but there's a, a larger encroachment being taken place by the, by the municipalities, and so the issue of who's going to be part of the Fire Districts and who aren't in the, in the future, it's going to, it's going to continue to, to be raised. So I think at this point, as we're trying to deliberate some of the challenges on the finances or whatever here with District Two, I would like to get some public input. I'd like to see what the community is saying about this. And so in this regard, I don't have a problem executing some type of public hearing on this.
Okay. Well, again, if that is the desire of the, of the Commission, the, the motion should carry the element of, it will, would be on the agenda of our next meeting to make a decision in regards to the date of the public hearing. And as we look at the options, I think the focus should be on, is it option F in that regard? So anyway, Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I am supportive of proceeding with a process of a public hearing, and as you well know, I've been a, a strong advocate at looking at consolidation as an issue, but I, I'm not comfortable with that necessarily being the direction of this public hearing process. That, that confuses the discussion or the issues facing this district, and, and while I would advocate that in a general sense, I think we should probably focus our attention on the needs of this district, both the operational and the financial components. I think Mr. Dugan raised several valid points. I still would like to know kind of what the strategic efforts are going to be, because those are imminent concerns, and then listening to Commissioner Allen's questions and Mr. Richardson's comments, and your point about Spring Hill, I think are fair concerns, they're valid concerns, and I think have long-term impact for the services that we should be focused on. Regardless of how this plays out, it's the people who will or will not get ambulance service or fire service that has to be our focus. So I, I'm supportive of that, sir.
No, well, I, I would agree with those comments that need to be focused on the, on the, on Fire District Number Two rather than some of the other larger issues. Mr. Brown?
Chairman, I just have a few comments, and I'm ready to make a motion when everyone is ready here. Based on the financial projections that were provided to us, the uncertainty regarding the long-term contracts and viability, and because we're ultimately responsible, as the Board of County Commissioners, and because of what I know, I share with my fellow commissioners, the greatest concern for overall Johnson County and for our district patrons of the Fire District, I would move that the board authorize and direct staff to place an item on the board's action agenda on May 17th for consideration by the board. A resolution calling for setting a public hearing for June 7th, 2018, as a part of the board's business session commencing at 9:30 a.m. in this room, at which the board will receive and consider public comments on the change of governance for Johnson County Fire District Number Two from an appointed board to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to place the item in regards to the public hearing on next week's agenda. I should also note that there will need to be public notifications sent out to patrons of the district of that, so the time period will, would allow us to do that if that's the decision going forward. So, Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, the June 7th date, is that also a budget hearing date?
It's the following week.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If there is none, the motion is be forced. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Heilert?
Aye. Motion carried. So the item in regards to a public hearing will be on next week's agenda. Well, thank you all for your participation and your interest. Our Committee, the whole, is adjourned, and we'll take a short break and come back and finish the agenda review. The beginning of our budget hearing at 1:00 p.m. will probably be deferred for a period of time, so, but we will complete that process also today. Thank you all.